Looking forward to those questions and hearing.
Thank you.
Senator Haskins?
Thank you very much. There's one on the point here with some information that I received. I understand that there are suboxone providers with wait lists, some significant wait lists, and I know you're concerned about reasons of this, and how people are sitting there waiting. And I'd just like to have you give me any information that you might have, physicians, who might be contacting or letting them know that they have got wait lists.
Happy to.
And Representative Frank?
Thank you. The material question, there's an assumption that 80 percent of current服用 users are going to be transitioning over to suboxone. I guess the first question is, how would the 80 percent number get out of debt, and then sort of follow the less anticipated happen with the, say, 20 percent that aren't trying to?
Yeah, and we can get you more information on the assumptions. And certainly prior to this was to underscore that this is not a savings initiative per se, that we recognize that the cost would be transitioning from methadone to suboxone, but we can get you more of the details around those assumptions.
Rossa Parton?
Thank you, Commissioner. That raises a question in response to answering your case. If it's not a money-saving issue, why is it being recommended?
Because we believe in the integration and the approach to the treatment within a primary care setting. The concerns associated with the fragmented delivery system and the lack of coordination of care, and are promoting this as more of an integrated care-delivery model. Certainly have serious concerns about the lack of reporting of this to the prescription monitoring program that is a federal restriction. So it is more a recommendation related to a treatment model that we believe more effective and more supportive of better outcomes.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'd like to see the background and most, I'd like to see who recommended that to you, and perhaps they signed their name to it so we know who they are. Thank you.
Representative Stocky?
Thank you. Commissioner, I'm not sure I have this completely right, but I think my education over the past few years on this issue informed me that the methadone isn't, it's not the therapy. It's what gets you down so you can have your counseling. The cure comes from the therapy. Do I have that correct?
You have a lot of folks in the audience that are supposed to be willing to speak to you. The issue is the treatment and as part of an evidence-based treatment model is what obviously the intent is between both the methadone and then the therapy that accompanies that. But what we've also heard is that because of the rate of reimbursement, that that therapy may not necessarily be consistently provided, which would detract from the evidence-based delivery of the model.
So then my question is, are the primary care providers, are they going to be providing that therapy once they get the folks settled down enough so that they can get to that part of the treatment? Is that part of their scope of expertise or practice? It seems to me it's like two different disciplines.
Well, certainly, as I mentioned, the intent is also to address the physical health needs of these individuals, that we have serious concerns are going unmet related to the current model, and would certainly expect that there be continued coordination with behavioral health services that would need to be part of their treatment as well.
Yeah, it doesn't seem like the shift to suboxone primary care providers fits with my limited education about what the best practice is in this area. So maybe there are others here who will straighten me out here if I'm being honest. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And looking at the list, the 45 names that I have here, I've got 16 that have indicated they wanted to speak on methadone, so I'm sure we're going to hear plenty of that. That's the idea, is public hearing, we're trying to get the public up here. So, did you go?
Yep, I'm ready. I think you had another hand.
Can I have one? I do. Representative Hamm?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No, that was a good question. Simple question of yours. I do think, I think we have to see if the two drugs are probably the most important aspects of this proposal. I'd like to talk about the transportation costs. It's like there's a $10 million cost of transportation, of providing transportation for people to go to a clinic daily, for something like methadone, which they won't be required with suboxone because there's no risk of abuse with suboxone that are able to take help. Did I read that correctly? There's no risk of abuse?
But there is not a required, obviously, they're getting a prescription, and it's not a daily trip to a clinic as exists with methadone.
Okay, is that still provided for the transportation?
To the clinic, to the primary care practice, yes. So there are certainly transportation costs there, far different from the transportation costs associated with methadone, but we can see whether or not we can cull out of the transportation billing, whether we can isolate those patients for suboxone.
Okay, so am I reading the numbers correctly? There's a $10 million cost savings in the transportation of not providing the daily transportation, but probably increased costs in primary care.
Yeah, and the challenge, of course, with the transportation is that we now operate under a managed care waiver for the delivery of transportation services, so that's a risk-based brokerage system. It is, the rates are based upon a capitated rate that is done through an actuarial analysis, so they're not bookable savings, they would be reflected in a future actuarial rate analysis. You're welcome.
Representative Teague?
I think we're going to end up questioning that one.
You were first.
Thank you. We figure after two plus years I have that figured out, but I don't, so. Commissioner, I need to verify something with respect to River View, and the reason I'm asking is, again, I think it was alluded to a couple days ago. You know, the department has really ratcheted up its social media presence around some of the information, and is distributing a lot more information on social media. I noticed, just because I was interested in looking, that, you know, while you were testifying, one of your staff in the room tweeted that, a point of clarity, despite year-long rumor the federal government has not withdrawn $20 million in funding from River View, could you clarify the situation right now of the department with respect to CMS, with respect to River View? My understanding is that we received notification in late 2013 that we were no longer eligible to participate in Medicare and Medicaid funding for services at River View. We have appealed that, we continue to draw down that funding, but that funding is a risk based upon the appeal that you've had with CMS. Is that accurate, or?
No funds, no federal funds have been taken from the state by CMS or denied this, I hadn't finished.
Sorry.
Or denied the state, but we have repeatedly indicated, as I just did in my testimony, that certainly upon an audit, they could potentially be at risk. We would likely appeal based upon our continued assertion that the state is entitled, certainly whether if we prevail in the lawsuit, or based upon the assertion that they should not be connected to whether or not the hospital is certified participating in Medicare.
But the federal government's position is that you are not eligible to receive funding, but they have not stopped you from drawing down the cost.
Correct.
Thank you.
Representative Hamm?
Yes, I just have a quick request.
Hi.
Oh, two.
Thank you.
Sorry about that.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. I have a quick request, it's going to take a minute. Transportation, I'd like to see how many of the, and I'm going to call them patients that receive this treatment, have been involved in car accidents, and I'd just like that for the work session, if you would, and has there been any critical incidents from the people receiving it when they're driving themselves?
See what, I'll see what we can find.
And I'm fairly certain there's some statistics on that. Thank you, very much.
Representative Thorndyke?
Yeah, I just wanted to sort of swing back to the issue of capacity for them. And of the 318, is it right, 218 doctors currently providing suboxone, are those all primary care docs?
I will have to take a look.
I'd be great to have a breakdown to clear those.
We'll take a look.
Are we going to move from methadone now? What's left?
This initiative transfers and real allocates one full-time office associate and one part-time office assistant to a physician from 64 percent general fund and 36 percent of his special revenue within the Office of the Commissioner and District Operations to 100 percent general fund within the Office of Substance Abuse and Mental Services in order to align with the office in which the physician works. Page 280. This is again within the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Office relating to funding for forensic consumers. This is requesting in state fiscal year '16, $1,420,000 and a similar amount in '17. This initiative would increase baseline budget for forensic consumers receiving residential services. The courts have deemed these individuals to be not criminally responsible and have placed them into the care and custody of the department's commissioner. However, in certain cases, these individuals no longer meet the clinical level of care, and again, here I am speaking specifically to residential treatment, not hospital level care, even though the courts have required that they remain in a group living situation. There are, at any given time, on average, 10 forensic clients living in residential settings who do not meet the clinical criteria for being in residential treatment. Because of the court ordered placement, many times the provider could potentially be billing Medicaid at risk of repayment. The requested general fund support would mitigate that risk. Page 254 and 280. Why do I feel like I've already done that one? How brown? It's different. This initiative increases the baseline budget by $1,233,947 for the bridging rental assistance program, which is a core consecutive service. This funding would fulfill a need for 210 new GRAP vouchers in '16 and '17 based on a recent estimate of waitlist data. GRAP funding currently resides in the 0121 Mental Health Services community and is not a caring account. However, the prior legislation authority was granted allowing GRAP-specific funding in the Mental Health Services Community appropriation as a caring account. This initiative and the associated language in Part XX will consolidate all bridging and rental assistance program funding into one caring appropriation associated with the language in Part XX. On page 286. This initiative requires an increase to the baseline budget to match the federal grant dollars available. The baseline budget is significantly less than the federal dollars that are available for services annually. This increase will allow agreements to be covered timely without the need for a large financial order at the beginning of each state fiscal year. Page 279. This initiative would increase baseline budget to match annual revenue and provide timely funding for statewide coverage of gambling services for prevention, intervention, treatment, and recovery. The Office of Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services receives $100,000 annually from the gambling control board, and there is a need for the baseline budget to match annual revenue so that the agreements can be covered without the need for a financial order each state fiscal year. The amount of increase to match allotment would be $50,000 in '16 and the same in '17. Page 287. Again, in the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Office. This initiative continues one limited period, Education Specialist One physician through June 10, 2017. It provides funding for the related all other. This physician was previously authorized in public law 2013, Judge N. 68. The incumbent filling this position is Maine's signer of Tobacco Enforcement Coordinator, which is a mandated position within the federal Substance Abuse block grant. This physician collaborates with other state agencies to ensure compliance with the federal funding requirements such as tobacco enforcement and federal reporting. This position works with coalitions and other key state authorities in Maine on substance abuse assessment, prevention, and intervention initiatives. The Education Specialist One expands SAM's role in other offices within state government to align and integrate services, and this position is written into grant proposals that SAM is currently employing.
Representative Thorndyke?
Thank you, Senator. Can you share, do you think for the work session, we could get a list, you've mentioned throughout your testimony, like Specialist One and QD specialist, every different position and what their job description is? Thank you.
Page 290. This is that to River View. This initiative provides funding for a lease agreement for the Office of Health Patient Services. The Office of Health Patient Services was formerly located at the Mark Block Building on our complex. Due to needed renovations, the office moved to lease space in May 2014, and the annual lease is $60,864. This was also in the supplemental request. Page 289. This initiative establishes one director of supported education physician in the Office of Health Patient Services for River View to reduce recidivism rates. This new position in the Office of Health Patient Services will support reduced recidivism by stabilizing patient education experience. Recidivism rates are a consent to grid measure. This is requesting general fund dollars of $84,158 in '16 and $88,706 in '17. Page 290. This is different than what we've been talking about related to DISH, so I just want to be clear. This is requesting $1,924,081 in '16 and $1,916,686 in general fund to replace DISH payments. This initiative provides funding to offset a reduction in DISH payments based upon the amount of available funding utilizing the historical level of uncompensated care and the hospital-specific limit for River View. This is a methodology that relates to the patient census and what days of patient stays are disproportionate, share hospital funding eligible within the program also known as Institutions for Mental Disease.
The language review is nothing more really than a replay of what we've been through.
Yep.
Any last questions for Commissioner Mayhew?
For right now. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. Do I have anybody else from the departments? Go with the department at this point? Okay. So we move into the public comment portion of the afternoon. Thank you for your patience. We're two, an hour and a half into this now. Just a reminder to everybody that as that microphone is on, we are live, onto the internet and broadcasting out the building there. There can be some people out taking notes as to what we say. Your printed testimony is also public. If you've brought printed testimony, four copies, go over to Mary Ann, she'll take care of that distribution. And those are also public documents, as I said before. They get scanned and added to the whole mix on this bill. It's available for review on the internet. You've also seen folks moving in and out of the room. Don't be afraid to get up and move out of the room, take a break, get a breath of different air. It's not a problem. What I'm doing is, as I work my way down through the list, I'll basically be doing on deck circle or give you the next four or five names so as you know you'll be coming up. And let's see what else. Yep.
Welcome, Ross. We're so pleased that you're all here. I just also want to mention that you'll see committee members getting up and leaving, coming back, coming and going. It's not because they aren't interested in your testimony. We're all really glad you're here and anxious to hear your testimony. Sometimes people have to present bills in other committee rooms or meetings in other places in the State House complex, so please understand if you see people getting up and leaving and coming back. We do ask people to limit their testimony to three minutes. There's a clock here, and the reason that we do that is because we want to hear from everybody. The other night we were here at 8:00 o'clock at night, and we don't want people to have to stay with 8:00 o'clock at night in order to be able to speak to us, and that's why we enforce the three-minute time period. Something that I would add too, if you testify that you wouldn't be willing to go downstairs to the Welcome Center to free up space for people, we're the Welcome Center to come up here. And I will say, the late Senator Joe Brannigan, who was the House Chair of this committee, always used to say to people, it's a lot more fun down in the Welcome Center, because as Senator Hammper has already called our attention to, there is a level of decorum that's expected in this room that is not expected in the Welcome Center. And Senator Brannigan always used to remind people, it really was a lot more fun down there, because you could make comments and hoop and holler, which you can't do here. So anyway, we're glad you're all here, thank you for your patience.
And it can be a daunting task to be at that microphone there. Even those of us who have served in the legislature, when you have a bill and you're introducing a bill, many times it is not a pleasant experience to be standing there. And in this case, you've got 26 of us instead of just 13, so it's a double. So Representative Stocky down there is the person that's closest to you. If you want to, you know, direct your attention to him, I don't think he bites.
He'll always smile.
He'll always smile. So if you're nervous about looking and addressing the 26 of us, just over to a break. He'll try to make you feel comfortable. So I'll start off with Nelson Durbin, then I've got David Walz, Richard Diamond, Patty Hamilton, and Eileen Fingerman.
Good afternoon, Senator Hammper, Senator Brackey, Representative Gattin, Representative Rotundo, and members of the joint standing committees. It's a pleasure to be here to talk to you today, and I do appreciate the opportunity for the public out forward to express our views. I'm here today to speak in opposition to the budget proposal to eliminate reimbursement for methadone treatment over a two-year period. Our city, City of Bangor, wholeheartedly supports a reimbursement model that supports more counseling and an increase in the use of suboxone in general. However, we do not oppose continuing the methadone treatment. As you may or may not be aware, Bangor community has spent and undergone a significant community process to identify ways to mitigate issues that opioid abuse in our community causes. Participation in this process has included the CEOs of our three major hospitals, CEOs from other health and insurance organizations, medical community, substance abuse counselors, providers, and the general public. What we have learned was that there's significant barriers to obtaining alternative treatments to methadone and counseling. The most notable barrier, that's approved by their infrastructure, does not exist to absorb these patients within a one- to-year period. Cultural changes now need to occur within the primary care practices in our rural communities to help absorb the 1,500 methadone patients we currently are seeing in Bangor. Bangor has approximately one-third of the total methadone distribution in the state. The city is keenly aware that the concentration of drugs of methadone in Bangor is a trouble zone, and we share the government's concern that there's too much methadone in our region. I do not think it is a secret that the citizens of Bangor and the Bangor Police Department and Council would prefer that methadone was not applied to our community unlimited. Nonetheless, we are concerned for our community if those dependent on methadone are no longer able to receive treatment. With all that said, we would like to share with you some of the good things that are happening in Bangor to address the opioid addiction and the explosive growth of medication-assisted treatment. I've listed here several things that I've provided in my testimony, a complete package of a plan that we're working on in Bangor. Ken Schmidt, CEO of Penaustra Community Healthcare Center, has convened a group of providers representing a cross-section of the medical community, including East Main Healthcare, St. Joseph Healthcare, to develop a protocol for prescribing of opioids and other addictive drugs. And the hope is that we will come to an agreement in our opiates and other addictive substances to be prescribed. Dan Fox, CEO of Acadia Hospital, has convened a methadone providers in the community to discuss best practices and develop protocols for prescribing methadone and suboxone. Mary Curvolo, CEO of St. Joseph Healthcare, has convened a group to evaluate different models across the country of delivery of medication-assisted treatment to try to develop a model that would provide the medication treatment that's needed in rural areas. I've attached a copy of all of this, this community's final report outlining the recommendations. There are many other initiatives that came from this process, and we're proud of the fact that our medical providers, social service providers, and the community have come together to work on a problem, to solve this issue. At this time, my primary concern is that the elimination of methadone in two years will result in the number of people who are needed methadone who are unable to access other treatments due to the shortage of providers. Concerning to our police tree, is that the potential to lead to an even greater escalation of crime and illegal drug trade. As a community with the highest number of methadone patients in the state, we implore you to remove that provision of the budget which eliminates methadone in two years. Further, we ask that the governor and the legislature work together and with the City of Bangor to develop a needed treatment alternative to the folks having to obtain methadone. Again, thank you for your time, and I'm going to answer any questions you might have. We have a number of people here that are going to talk to you today.
Thank you, Nelson. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, Senators Hammper and Brackey, Representatives Rotundo and Gattin, and members of the full joint committees. I'm Dr. David Walz, and Chief of Addiction Behavioral Health Services at the Close Hospital, and I'm Chief Psychiatrist for the Addictions Program, the Addiction Resource Center at Mecos. You have my testimony, I'm going to try to just talk into you, but there are only a few points that really need to be made. For the last eight years, I've been prescribing suboxone on a weekly basis, but never prescribed methadone, and yet I'm deeply opposed to eliminating methadone, and I'll tell you why. First of all, they are very different drugs. They're both approved and proven for help with opioid dependency, but it would be like saying that antibiotics are interchangeable. They're not. Each is good for specific situations and not for others. Suboxone is very good for many people, but not for everybody. It has a ceiling effect, which means that above a certain dose, it has no more effect. So people who are heavily addicted, IV heroin users who have been using for a long time, it's not enough for them. And very particularly, people transferring from methadone, it's not enough for them. I don't know what the average methadone dose is, but it's at least 60 or 80 milligrams. And you have to give 30 milligrams or that's the line of transition to suboxone, otherwise you'll go into withdrawal and help work. So people who are maintaining methadone in this plan would have to decrease to that level, stabilize there, not just get there and hold your breath before they could change to suboxone. Many, many people cannot do that, and as the most seriously addicted would not be able to make that transition and be in trouble. My second point is that they're dispensed differently. Suboxone is prescribed from doctor's office or from a program. You can get up to a month at a time. Methadone, you go every day, liquid methadone, a nurse watches you take it and swallow it. There's much less risk of abuse. I've talked about suboxone, these smuggled into jails, let's just to be the expert. We spend a lot of time in our program making sure that people are not abusing, and we usually run step ahead of the study. People who cannot manage the suboxone in our program, people who take too much of it, who give it away, who give it to their partners, who sell it, when we find that out, we discharge them. If somebody is pregnant, for instance, and we can't just discharge them, we refer them to a methadone program, because they'll be much more closely monitored. If that is not available, they would put a residential treatment, which would be far more expensive than a methadone program. The final point, which is maybe the most important, is that there is simply not the resources to make this transition. Whatever they say about the number of doctors, there are. Many of those doctors accept cash only, $300 a visit. Many others are at capacity. I forgot what the third problem was. Oh, and many of them just don't prescribe. Many people who are listed as having the DEA numbers that they need don't prescribe. I was very surprised to hear Commissioner Mayhew's story about the program in Brunswick that found resources within $2, because I'm the program in Brunswick. When we try to transition somebody, when they're doing very well, we want to open up space for someone else, there's one single doctor in the whole Brunswick area that accepts our patients, and that's only after they've stabilized for a year or two and they're doing very well. When people get discharged from our program, they cannot find someplace else to go, they have a very, very automated list. We have people coming from South Portland, from Portland to Brunswick, from Rockland, from Waldenburg. from Waldenboro, because there are not resources available for Suboxone otherwise. This has been described as a leap of faith. Leap of faith is a very nice idea that people's lives are at stake, and we need first to develop the capacity to develop, to prove them, not just what it says on paper, but actually know that people are available to do this in order, before we start transitioning the people. There's a whole other section about what it would take for a primary care doctor to do this, but something to be added on. So, I'd be happy to answer your questions.
Thank you, Doc. Questions? Representative Bernstein?
Senator, excuse me for coming in so late. I'm a family nurse practitioner. Do you know of nurse practitioners at all who prescribe Suboxone?
They're not allowed to. They're legally prohibited.
That's what I thought. Thank you.
I think it's illegal, but they're not allowed.
Okay, thank you.
Senator Brackey?
Excuse my ignorance on this whole issue in general, it's all very new. What are the reasons that Suboxone is able to be prescribed in a primary care setting when methadone is only available in a clinical setting?
It's a question of regulations. I'm not exactly sure, but I do know is that Suboxone is a combination of duprenorphine, which is the active ingredient, and something called naloxone, which if you injected the drug, it would put you into withdrawal. So, under those circumstances, I believe it is felt safe enough to be able, that it would be not subject to abuse and could be prescribed by the doctors almost. In fact, it can, it's not abused, almost all of Suboxone used on the street is to keep people out of, I mean, when they're not in the programs, to keep them out of withdrawal. People generally don't get high from it, but if they did inject it, they would get high from it, and so it's constructed in such a way that it's much harder to do that.
Representative Samuelson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There's a cap on the number of patients any one physician can care for. Is that 100?
It's 30 for the first year, and then you can apply for a waiver and make it 100.
30 for the first year and then 100.
So, we have three full-time physicians. At my agency, we have 300 patients.
And one other question. Oh, how much do you utilize? Just very quick background, when we were discussing methadone in the last legislative session, we actually had some individuals that had been utilized in Bangor methadone clinics, and they came before us and vehemently said that that was the worst thing that they ever did, and they didn't really ever get the help. And they, there probably are several individuals on telling their story, they didn't really get the help they need or get the strength that they needed until they actually started attending Narcotics Anonymous. How many of your patients do you actually refer to Narcotics Anonymous?
Well, Narcotics Anonymous or Alcoholics Anonymous, all of them. It's a very important type of treatment.
And how much utilization do your patients do with that? Do you have any idea how many follow-through with that?
A lot there in the program. Probably 75% at least, and of them, the ones who get sponsors are a whole lot the double of getting help. It is very important. Yeah, one of the things I wanted to say is that Suboxone, I'm fond of saying to patients that this is a great drug for your brain, but it won't do anything for the life choices you made and the habits that you developed. So, we only prescribe it as part of treatment. And one of the big problems with talking about primary care, even though it is legal to prescribe in primary care, is I believe that you really need treatment along with... So, we don't, somebody who's coming to A R C where I work, and it happens sometimes that they show up for the Suboxone, but they don't show up for treatment, and we don't do that.
So, you treat the whole body, not just the addiction?
Well, we treat the whole addiction, not just the brain part of it.
Yes, yes, okay. And do they do that in methadone clinics? Insist that there's a partnership with a fierce program like N A, like you're required to do it?
I can't speak to that. I've never worked in a methadone clinic, so I can't do that.
Representative Dunn? Good. Okay. Thank you, Doc. Richard Diamond?
Senator Happer, Brackey, Representative Rotundo, Gutten, Windsor, and Sanderson, other members of both committees, thank you for this opportunity to speak with you this afternoon. My name is Dick Diamond. I'm a retired physician from Southwest Harbor and Steering Committee Chair of the Hancock County Drug Court. I am very concerned about the governor's proposed budget that fails to provide increased funding for Maine's adult drug treatment courts to replace the funding lost by expiration of a federal enhancement grant. As a result, the continued success of Maine's very effective drug court program will be compromised significantly. The proposed budget includes $8.124 million in funding for seven new MDA agents, four new Assistant Attorneys General, four new district court judges, and 22 new assistant district attorneys quote, to increase enforcement of drug trafficking crimes and to provide additional resources for prosecution and adjudication end quote. Notably absent, however, is increased funding for our drug treatment courts. The drug court is designed to break the recurring cycle of addiction, crime, and incarceration by focusing on the rehabilitation of selected defendants instead of sending them to prison. Furthermore, drug courts in Maine and across the nation decrease crime and recidivism, increase public safety, increase sobriety and recovery among former defendants, and provide substantial annual savings in unexpended net correctional costs. In fact, drug courts are more cost-effective than any other criminal justice intervention. They work better than jails or prison, they work better than probation, they work better than treatment alone. In 2011, Maine's drug court program was awarded a $1.5 million, three-year Bureau of Justice Assistance Grant to enhance case management, and this grant was extended until September 30th, 2015. Expiration of this grant will create a...